Just call our work section to order for this evening. Matt, you have the first item this evening?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we have the budget items for review. BJ, you want to go ahead and walk through, please?
Yeah, sure.
We've spent a lot of time on this. We hope you guys find it's beneficial and helpful.
So part of our budget process now includes providing the council with a list of budgetary items before they're included in the actual budget. I have hard copies here if anybody's interested in them.
If you don't have a hard copy, you may, if you want to make notes.
Those last pages on here, right?
Is it on here?
Yeah, it's on there.
I didn't know that was on there.
Yeah, it's on there. But I didn't know if you guys wanted one or not. Oh, okay, you put it on there. Okay, I apologize.
Thanks.
Oh, sorry.
I have a trash? I have it, but. Okay. So we provide this to town council here just to kind of overview. Like I said before, they're included into the budget. The main highlights that you'll see as we move forward, not all of these may make it into the actual budget. There may be some other items depending on council's wishes there. But just to kind of go over things here, going from the top down, well, let me start out. The orange highlighted items, the town manager and I are already recommending to be deferred. The items in white are the items that we are recommending. Some of the amounts will differ. The budgeted impact is what was originally requested by the department. And then over on the right-hand side, the recommended is what we were recommending. So the compensation study, year three, this is the third year of the compensation study, and final year would be $140,000. 2% merit increase, about $217,000. I won't read through each and every one of these and bore you, but the...
It is a merit increase, not a COLA increase?
That's correct. It's a merit increase, and it will be based on the performance. So not every employee will get 2%, you know, maybe half a percent, or maybe a little bit more than 2%. It's all based on the matrix. But the amount we're budgeting is 2%. The matrix will make it come out to right around that area usually, is what we're seeing so far. Removal community resource officer position, and then part-time maintenance position to full-time senior maintenance tech. And the water treatment plant, we are deferring that, as well as additional officer positions, deferring those. Coming down here to the service operating, the legal fees for the civil suit on the EDA, related to the EDA. What we're recommending, the $200,000 there, is to use the debt service money for the EDA that we, the budget amendment that we've just done. We would take that $141,000 and move it over into that line item. So it's not actually an additional expense to the budget. We're just using those funds over until we get to the bottom of that. The insurance consulting firm, so there, Mr. Gillespie, he was asking about the remaining money, so that's where we're budgeting for that. And that would be the $40,000 for next year. The $21,000 that was just approved was the six months for this year. Staffing for Northwest Community Services, this $93,500 is going to be offset by the revenues that we would receive in from Northwest. If you remember back in, I believe, July or August, we did a budget amendment to receive the funds from them. That's for our police officers going out and helping staff Northwest. So again, that's not a true expense increase. I mean, it's being offset by the revenues that we're receiving there. Chemical performance study for the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant uses a lot of chemicals. I think the budgeted line item was about $800,000 for this year. So we're going to have a study done to see if we're best using those chemicals for that. There's the... I'm sorry? No question here?
No, we haven't got to mine yet.
Okay, I haven't got to yours yet?
No.
All right.
I'll tell you when you do.
Very good. The reallocation of the EDA debt services, there's the $141,000 that I was speaking about up there at the top. Property maintenance, $40,000. We're going to carry those, continue to carry that forward. The trolley extended hours there, they're highlighted in yellow. So to extend the hours, to start at 6:30, would be $12,272. And then trolley extended hours for Saturday and Sunday from 11:00 to 1:00 o'clock would be $6,136. Currently, the trolley's costing us roughly $40,000. So incurring these two items would bring the total to $58,408, about a 46% increase. So we wanted to kind of get council's take on that. Sorry?
No, go ahead.
We want to get council's take on that and see what the appetite was to move forward with that, or how we'd like to proceed.
So this sounds really small to probably everybody at this table, but the gazebo flicks, it's $4,000. I got a lot of people asking about that. It was a great community effort. Does this $4,000 include the business sponsorships that went into it? Sometimes a business with sponsors, specific movie, come out with maybe some tchotchkes, do maybe their commercial for a couple hundred dollars.
This is the, just the town's portion. So it's after we take those deductions from the businesses. This was the town's portion. It doesn't include the staffing or anything like that. That's just the expense for the movie itself.
BJ, I would like to try and keep extending the hours in. You know, there's a lot of people in our community with some mobility issues. I mean, I have gotten the requests from people who wanted later in the evenings. And then the big thing, too, was also earlier hours on the weekends, because I do not believe that it even starts until, I think, 12 or 1...
1:00.
1:00 on the weekend. And a lot of things, you know...
We can certainly take that into consideration.
I would like to try and keep it and see if we can find...
I think it's a fine balance, because, I mean, it's almost a pure cost, where we charge 50 cents.
Right.
You're right. So it's a pure expense for us in providing a service. I think the goal would be to hit the optimal times to provide as much transportation as we can during the days. But I think that there are going to be times where we're not going to be able to hit everything, because it is, you know, a pure expense for us. So like, for instance, starting at 6:30 in the morning, you know, I don't think I need to know this, but, you know, what is our ridership at? When do we start now, 8:00, 9:00?
I don't know. I don't really answer that myself.
I'd be curious to know our ridership at that time, just because, again, like, I assume that we're making a decision based on a demand or based on a particular need, and not just because it'd be nice to have the extended hours. Because it is small, but, you know, $18,000, gazebo flicks, things like that. I mean, every little thing adds up, so.
Yeah, this 6:30 a.m., I could see ridership for those who work first shift, like, out near the corridor on the 7:00 a.m. shift.
Then we have the corridor. Doesn't that come in?
I think you have to get to one to get to the other. Do you know what I mean? Like, I think the one thing goes from you have to get to Walmart to get to the corridor, yes. You have to get to the Walmart to get to the...
So the trolley take you up to Walmart, and you catch the...
I think it's just how much do we want to spend?
Right.
Just your help.
All right. We've already talked about the gazebo flicks. Leatron Parkway flyover engineering, we're deferring that. Moving over here to the machinery and equipment. So the body cameras for the police department there, the budget impact, $175,000 isn't quite accurate. There is a program that's available to lease the body cameras at 0% interest, so it would be $35,000 annually for five years. The town manager and myself and Chief, we have a meeting to discuss the further of the body cameras and maybe some consolidation efforts with some other expenses for the police department. So there hopefully will be more to come on that. But right now, we're going with the safe amount of $35,000 to...
Do we not already have those? Are these replacements?
These are replacements. So they've reaching end of life, and this new program offers some benefits to that.
I mean, do we just have these on our replacement cycle of, you know, after a five-year...
We had tried a replacement cycle, but what we're finding is, is that the hardware's becoming obsolete. So we can only just replace, like, the body camera. We're going to have to replace other components as well. So that's why we have further discussions, and want to try to figure out our best avenue and best course of action on these.
Yeah, the tech components like this, I don't, we made a decision to go to body cams, and I think we should just continue to support it and figure out how to have a replacement plan, so it's not, you know, council coming back a couple of years from now saying, "Why don't we even have body cams? Let's get rid of that."
And that's kind of what this is leading us into, is, you know, if we start budgeting maybe $35,000 a year, at that point, I believe this new program will help facilitate that, the replacement. So it is a replacement program versus, you know, coming back at one lump sum and needing $200,000.
Well, you're right, and this is, I can't tell you how much discussion we've had on this.
Oh.
And in fact, we've got three, we've got big shots coming to Town Hall tomorrow, because we're trying to lock their heels. They're changing the hardware and the software at such different cycles that, you know, you may end up with three or four different bases and three or four different pieces of equipment. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to standardize it so that we know we're going to replace them on these cycles, just like you said. And we found that leasing it is the most cost-effective and productive way of doing this.
Exactly.
It's, there's just no good answer. And what's happening is, you know, from a liability perspective, I mean, Chief can tell you that he wants these cameras from a liability protection perspective because of using it in court and whatnot. So it's just, there's just no good answer. That's just the age we've come to. But it's expected, and we're just going to keep that as a recurring cost.
Sure. Let's see here. Wire trailers, ADA, parcel cleaner, message boards, scales for four trucks for the refuse department, asphalt roller, 35 years, or retired, allergic. We're going to start accruing money for one to three years. We are deferring a small tractor with front end loader for horticulture, and electric vehicle charge station for electric departments. The, going down here into the capital projects for the vehicles, sorry. We are supporting the replacement of number 294, a four-by-four pickup for the police department for over $35,000. The other vehicles listed there are slated to be deferred at this time. Three units for the police department, two for highway maintenance, one for horticulture, and additional units for the police department.
And what we're doing, just so you know, members of council and Mr. Mayor, we have several vehicles coming off the police force, police department vehicles coming off, and we're going to reallocate those to public works who wanted new vehicles. We think they can get by for a year or two with some of these vehicles that we're reusing. And Chief, Chief and I and one of his captains had a really good meeting last week. We calculated that those two vehicles that have low mileage now, we've got a real issue with Ford and trying to, the lead time to get these vehicles in is a real challenge. We calculated they're going to have about 105,000 miles on it. So we, I think we can get them in next year's budget.
Yes.
So the timing's going to work out. So that's why we were able to take two of his patrol units off.
What are scales for... Scales? So the refuse trucks, my understanding is, is that there are actually scales that are going to be on the trucks themselves, so they can tell exactly how much they're hauling. And it helps out in the safety, as well as knowing how much of a load they have on at any given time. It's some...
That new?
It is a new mandate, I guess, from what I understand. I don't know all the ins and outs to it. It was explained to me, but I forgot in honesty.
I know when we got those last new trucks, they were overloaded several times, and tickets were given.
Okay.
So they need to be sure they're not overloaded when they take their trash...
It's like something that just indicates when they have a full load and...
Well, it indicates how much weight they can carry, because they're mandated if I beat out, how much weight they can carry per time.
And I was probably told that, but like I say, I...
I got a question, Mr. Teager.
Yes?
Before Joe Walz left, he was bringing the vehicle manager under his purview.
Yes, sir.
Where are we at with that?
Absolutely. I talk to him frequently. He came to the meeting with Chief, been very helpful. We've created a master list of every single vehicle and inventory with current mileage on the vehicles. He's having frequent conversations with me about which vehicles need to be rotated out, how many vehicles we have. I think we still have some downsizing we can do with some of the vehicles that we have, but it's been really helpful to have. I think there's wisdom in having that individual report directly to the town manager, as opposed to being under one particular department. I think there's some wisdom in that.
Doesn't that apply also to your equipment as well?
Yes, sir. Yeah, all, yes, all heavy equipment. They're doing a great job. They, you know, he keeps a report and sends me a report about the number of vehicles that he's maintaining on a daily, weekly basis. And it's just amazing how much work they're doing, how much money they're saving to taxpayers, as opposed to sending it out to commercial customers. I mean, they're really, that's one department that's absolutely paying for themselves.
Moving on here to building the structures. Emergency generator for the electric department for $75,000. It's something that was not added when we built the new electric department building, and something we're trying to move forward with, as well as paving a portion of the parking lot. We're trying to knock chunks off of the upgrades there for the electric department. Town auxiliary office, renovation there, fleet maintenance building and rehab, sorry, fleet maintenance building rehabilitation. So you'll see several items there below. Site work for rehabilitation, four-post lift, four-post lift alignment, turntable center, overhead crane, and replace wash bay vehicle equipment washing system. So those renovations, we've come to a total of roughly $1.6 million. What we're recommending is to set aside money to obtain a loan. So there at the bottom, and under the debt service, you'll see it again, the fleet maintenance building, 20-year loan, estimated annual amount of $118,65. That's what we're recommending to budget. That way, we can get a loan and move forward with the project with the rehabilitation on that. You may remember that we had engineering services come in while back there. We've been trying to move forward with this project, and that is the engineer's estimate.
Where do they do this now?
Same place. They're going to build a shop behind the building, and then utilize some of the current building. I've had several meetings with the director, and a lot of the work that's going to be done is going to allow more vehicles to go through in a more timely manner. Right now, they're having significant issues, because they don't have some of these lifts. And the buildings are in bad shape. You can go down and take a look, and it's reached, it's reached end of life. But, I mean, again, that's one of those capital items that we could defer. It's just the timing of it as such, you know, interest is low right now, financing is low. And from an overall perspective, we looked at this Sunday, our maximum debt limit is 353 million?
I don't remember.
I can get that to, it wasn't a CAFR. I mean, we are significantly, impressively low on our debt. And if we're going to incur debt, just like you said, Mr. Mayor, and some of the comments you made, this could be a good season to do it in, because of the amount of interest and the low interest that we have. And fix some of these infrastructure.
And some good news on the INI here, once we get down to that.
Emergency generator, the police department has never had one, now, I think.
Correct.
Why would we put one on our town admin building, but not the electric department?
The town admin building controlled the police phones, so...
It still does?
It does, yes, it still does. So if the town admin building goes out, then the police telephone system goes out, so...
That was done when we built the building, to keep it under budget, or keep it in the budget cycle.
Yeah.
What was that?
A generator. That's why it wasn't added originally.
For the electric. We've been doing, we've been making progress for it. It wasn't all done at one point in time. They built the main building, and a year later, they built the building behind it. And it's been slowly, the fencing, the pavement, as you see, not the, all the way around the building's not paved yet. So we've been doing bits and pieces at a time. Let's see here. Going down the infrastructure there, so fiber network, Kendrick Lane, or Kendrick Substation Transformer Replacement, three of six. Leap Run Parkway, expansions of services, I will continue to move forward with that, some multi-year project as well. Manassas Substation Transformer, another heavy transformer there, certainly have money for. Refurbished gravity thickener for the wastewater treatment plant. The INI abatement, so you'll see that $600,000 was a budget impact, and there's nothing in there for the recommended budget, if you go down to the debt service on this. So INI abatement program, we have the ability to get a loan and possibly 0% financing, as we did with the wastewater treatment plant. So what we're recommending is to budget $550,000 there for the INI abatement, which would cover a 20-year loan. If we get it at 0%, it would be even less than the $550,000. But we were told today, actually, that worst-case scenario, if we went through the same program for the wastewater treatment plant, that we would be eligible to get, I believe it was 1...
1.6.
1.6% financing, worst-case scenario.
Worst-case, 0% likely.
Yeah, 0%. So the, so we're recommending $550,000 in there to budget, so then we can advance the INI program, hopefully very soon.
BJ, going back to the INI, you know, I recommend tonight we take three more million out. We've got 10.1, I understand now, according to our in reserve funds. I should take the three million and allocate it strictly for that, but doesn't mean we have to spend it immediately. But keep it there, because I think that if we do that, and the DEQ finds out we're really making a big effort to do all this work, I think we're going to save money, not only in chemicals and issues that with the sewer treatment plant. And I think that we're going to come out ahead if we put that money available, make it available, even though, like, so we don't have to use it immediately, but have it available to set aside for that purpose.
Yeah, and it's, such as, we're looking at advancing our cammering program to, so if we advance the cammering for the INI abatement, we'll get a better handle on exactly how much it may cost us to do the improvements. So the $3 million that we would set aside, we could use for that. And then if we so chose, we could later get reimbursed by DEQ through the loan program.
And to add, we had a very healthy discussion today with our engineer regarding an RFP to put out the camp, to camera the lines. There's a couple, so what he's going to do, he's going to work on presenting a rough estimate for how much he believes it will cost to fix most of these basins. It's going to be within, I think he said, 15%, 20% of an estimate. That's going to give us a guide during our budget cycle, as far as how much we may want to consider allocating towards a loan. Once the camera work is done, then we're going to be able to come back and have a more precise figure of what's needed. But, I mean, so right now, I mean, I think, I think that $8 million might be a good number that we're going to, we would knock it out. I think we would really, really make a major...
At least the very minimum would get out of...
And they're going to camera, not only the, they're going to camera the line, the laterals as well, on public property, while they're there, while they're having to do it all. So we're going to have a really good assessment, as badly needed.
Well, with that, you know, we would put a set aside of 3 million. I think that we could utilize that for the program on the laterals, too. And if they know we're working those laterals, that's a big issue. I mean, I've been telling, saying that for years, because we've got clay, clay, two-foot pipes for laterals, and that's just what we call fringe drain in most cases, and just lets the water just funnel in, it's, it can be, you know, sucked into the grass. So we could do that. I really do believe it would, it would save us money in the future. We would go ahead and allocate more money, just have it available. And maybe have to spend it tomorrow, but have it allocated, so they know that we've got the money set aside for that particular issue.
And as Matt had said, with laterals, that is part of the cammering process, is there, and that the laterals cambered, so we can see where our problems lie. All right, so replace raw water pump station to year two or three, dessert control valve year two or three, prospect bridge repairs. We currently have that as recommended. We may shoot for revenue sharing on that one. So we're, that's a questionable one right there, but primary paving plan, $310,000. Move forward with that. Secondary paving plan, you'll notice that that is blank, again, going down to the bottom there for the debt service, recommending to 500, recommended budgeted for $533,865,000 for estimated total project of 4.8 million. What this would allow us to do is to take the paving program through year 2027.
BJ, you know, I brought up that tonight, and you know, I, now, you and I have talked about that.
Yes, sir.
And I think it would, it would be, what we're doing, I hate to say this, we're putting a Band-Aid on our streets, our infrastructure, by spending a little bit of money. I mean, $400,000 a lot of money, but when it comes to street maintenance, it's just not money.
You're right.
That's why I would recommend that we borrow at least 3 million, maybe a little more, and go ahead and get this work completed. We get $2 million a year, thereabout, from BDOT each year on our highway maintenance funding, and go ahead and borrow 3 million, 3 and 1/2 million, use the program we have. We got a Jackson Street Bridge, I don't think any of you've looked at that. The steel is showing through the decking. So when you get salt down in that, that means that deck's going to fail for, not too long from now, because it's going to start popping the top right off of that steel. We need to get these things, projects, completed. So I'm recommending, if the council would agree to that, is borrow whatever amount of money we need, 3 million, maybe more, because we can get it at about 2% now, I understand.
Exactly.
And we get the money from 2 million from that, we take 170,000, whatever it takes, to pay for that 20-year loan, and go ahead and get our repairs done on our infrastructure. Because the way we're doing it, we're not going to ever catch up, because we're just putting Band-Aids. We did slurry seal. I see you removed that this year, and I have no problem with that. But we slurry seal, that's a Band-Aid. It only lasts for two or three years, four. So I really like to see us could really consider that. And Matt, I'd appreciate if you would get all those figures together, so the council could maybe weigh in on this some weekend, and give you the approval, the ball run in, and get moving on this infrastructure.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. And if you look on the last page of this packet, you'll see the secondary paving plan, which is broken down. In addition, you see the amount of curb, curb and gutter. You know, you know as well as anyone, Mr. Mayor, probably better than most, that if we put curb and gutter down on these streets, we're going to extend, we're going to double the life of those streets. And again, from a cash flow perspective, we've been spending between 400 and 500,000 a year on secondary paving. So from a cash flow perspective, all we're doing, we're able to go out in, you know, 12 to 18 months, and get all the secondary roads that we've have projected all the way out to 2027, to get them in, which means we can get one or two very good contracts. We'd probably get a lot of good bidders, get really good contracts, so the cost per linear yard or foot is going to be less than it, than it would be in a, you know, in a normal, the way we've been doing it for decades, probably. And again, 2% interest, and we can afford it.
So I mean, I'm really requesting the council to agree to that, because I think it's really something we need to really look at. It's very important.
So the, just to break it down there, for the secondary paving plan, you see $533,000 recommended under the highway maintenance fund, and then $329,175 for the water. That is the water line upgrade that is associated with the paving plan. So if we went out and took and borrowed for both of those, the loan payment would be But we may have other options regarding the water line maintenance there, that we'll be discussing here in the future. Okay, so the, like you said, slurry seal, we carrying that forward there, deferring it. New traffic central for 14th Street and Shenandoah Avenue, no Shenandoah Avenue street lights, deferring that. John Marshall Turn Lane, deferring that. And then the automated metering infrastructure, we're deferring that to future there. And then down here in the debt service, we are still planning to allocate the $15,500 for the police department. That's comprised of the difference in the reassessed values from last year, as well as the money for the West Main Connector that's been allocated over to it. Debt service on a redundant water line of $500,000 for estimated total project loan of 11 million. We've already talked about the other debt service. And then, as Mr. Teager has mentioned there, cash just find the primary paving plan and the secondary paving plan. We do not recommend advancing the primary paving plan in order, so we can get the funding from BDOT for revenue sharing, primary extension, and other sources of revenue on that, only advancing the secondary at this point.
Yeah, just to add one final note, thank you, BJ. You guys can't understand how much time BJ puts into this stuff. Comes in every weekend practically, especially during budget seasons. I really appreciate working with you side by side. It's been a real pleasure for me. What we're trying to do in this budget is, this is our first significant presentation as it relates to some of the larger ticketed items, some of the capital items. Once we get our revenue numbers in, I'll be able, BJ, to work more closely and determine the operational side of the House and the capital side. I have a general sense from comments made tonight, I took notes, general sense of, you know, what people want to see and don't want to see. But again, this is the first track, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this could, you know, I may end up... you know, we, I may end up coming back and say we can't, you know, my recommendation is we can't afford five hundred thousand cash flow of X. But a lot of what we've done, and if you go back in prior years, you'll see from a cash flow perspective, we've been spending some of this money, secondary roads is an example. So for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more, we're going to do, we're going to extend out our roads for seven years, we're going to get them all done in twelve to eighteen months, if, if, if we can, you know, if we can afford it, of course. I think this, frankly, I think this is a year for capital, I think this is a year for capital expenses, as opposed to spending money on operations and seeing operations growing year over year. I think it's time for us to really invest, and what council's been telling me publicly and privately, is that, you know, citizens want to see us invest in capital, and see the, you know, see the, you know, the curb and gutters, and see the INI fixed, and see major, major projects like this, instead of kicking can down the road. So, again, this is our first, first track at it, if you all have comments privately, come set meetings up, happy to, to meet and discuss any of these items with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, BJ.
Thank you, BJ.
Do you have any other questions or comments on this?
Our next item, and I just closed meeting, could I have a motion to go into closed meeting?
Are we going to come out, back into work session, or?
Apparently not.
I don't think there's any item.
Okay, and just one quick comment to council, I will not be here next week. I know we're going to be looking to do the interviews next week, but I will be out of the country, so I won't be calling in either, the Monday and Tuesday, so I apologize that, it's a work conflict. I'm comfortable with council moving forward with those two firms, but if prefer to wait, then that's fine too, but I'm comfortable moving forward with it, so just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Hey, you have a motion?
The motion's on the, if you have the packets, on, on, if you have their, sorry.
Mr. Mayor has moved the town council convene and go into closed meeting with respect to the former, the former Haptim Inn property for the following purposes. Discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where it's made public initially, the financial interests of the town council would be adversely affected pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven point eight point six of the Code of Virginia. Number two, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the town council pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven point eight point twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven point eight point eight of the Code of Virginia. I further move that council convene and go into closed meeting with respect to the auxiliary office building to discuss the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the town council pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven point eight point twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia.
Give her a second.
Second.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Is, is Laurie?